What's that?
So my microphone is muted.
I don't have turbo mode there.
Look this one. So it's on now. Is that Laura or?
So.
That's fine, I had that one.
By the administrative.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I just.
Very students.
Yeah, it was with your other stuff.
This week me?
Yeah.
I missed it out.
I probably missed it.
Yeah, they're the hundred and eighty dollar.
Yeah. See if we can.
And you might have to, does he have to let people in too, or does help that? So you have to go to P four, but.
Yeah.
There you go.
What's that?
You're young in your laptops.
I think I needed my laptop for that today.
Am I second, send that to the? Cell phone.
Oh, cell phone covering. Oh, yeah, still be all done. All right, Amelia, thank you. Just making sure they could hear us online. It's good. We're gonna try something different without the owl this time. So we're coming back as far as we know.
Said he was, but he wasn't leaving earlier than he had to. So he'll probably be rolling in about.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do, give it a minute or we just start.
Let's give him a couple of minutes.
He seemed.
All right.
Yep, that's what I figured.
I've been in his shoes before. I don't know if ever been late. I think I'm like one minute right before.
Good morning.
The meeting in order. Going to. I don't have the agenda. What do I do with my agenda?
Yeah.
There are all our papers today. They're in the morning packet.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, all there.
Okay. I'll use that one then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take a minute.
Here. It's here to us.
Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if the thing we need to do is to approve the agenda. It's been moved.
I'll say.
And second, is there any discussion? Hearing that all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the motion carries. Next agenda item and we. We didn't. We didn't change anything on there has been asked for some. Things to be moved up before the close session.
Do you need a motion for that, or can we adjust things anyways? We decide to?
Like since we are approved, we're kind of stuck, but I can jump down, jump around if we wanted to. But I'd sent an email asking if Ben wanted to close session under twenty one five one I and he had written back to start an open and then. Uh, case things start being said about employees with names and I wanted to. Then let him know that he can only request close session for himself. Under twenty one five one I and we're not going to disclose any names of any other employees during this meeting. And so, um, cause that would be confidential. And so we would just wanted to. I guess I make the record clear if you want to open or if you want to closed.
All right, once we kind of, I guess, get into what we're. I'm talking about, I mean, I guess clear idea of what we're wanting to discuss. I guess that's. All right, well, I guess like to request. Either of those, I guess, we're. We'll keep it open until I guess. Something more. I guess I'd prefer to keep it closed.
Good. I wanna open it up for public comments. Anybody here from the public wish to speak? Anybody online wish to speak? Yeah, I just have it going through this instead of that.
Only mark some care.
Try and try and some. Getting fixed. There we go. How's that?
Hey.
All right, well, close public comment portion. And so. We're going to go under, uh, under open at this point. Um, Ben has not asked for closed session and so. I guess we'll go, go from there. First thing that we. I guess the. We wanted to jump down just for the substance of the meeting. We wanted to talk with the engineer to collaborate on roads, bridges. Staffing structure, equipment, um, a couple of the things that we had talked about previously. Was the like an equipment replacement plan? For what? Equipment we have and what kind of a replacement plan those are on, like end of life type of stuff for the. Equipment and. What kind of policy do we have in place for that?
I think I guess I'm gonna need to go. Because. I haven't packaged here, I guess. Of the apartment structure. And one of, I guess, the roads that we have, I guess, one talks about the porries that we have. First, chosen for is, I guess, things that, yeah. And then the third base would be the, um. The equipment, um, and kind of the. This, this event schedule. But then a third, fourth is just a, I guess, uh. Saying, uh, our goal had from. Proceeds kind of. In the first year I was here from one of these guys from. Nineteen eighty nine, I wanna, I guess. Kind of goes on the history of how many roads were built, um, and whatnot, so. Right, um, I guess we can go into. The equipment, uh, the green. Bring on it. Go into that, um, we have about. I guess I'll just go down line of what we got. Um, we have sixteen pickups, um, kind of estimated life of fifteen to twenty years. Um, when I first got here, they purchased about, um, four, you know. Singles, single cab trucks, um. And then. So we're. Sitting pretty well in those. There's a few, I know. I, uh, construction technician is. Old Foreman pickup from two thousand and three, um, or nineteen ninety eight. Remember which, which year it is, but. Seen better days, so that would be one to. Look to update, so that's why I'm gonna add it there in the. The twenty seven. Um, replacing maybe one or two of them there. Then the maintenance supervisor pickups. Um, we had those. On a little bit. Earlier schedule, um, because we want to have those, you know, in snow time. I want to make sure that those are. The snow, I mean, we're not, you know, having. Totally little breakdowns of just, you know. Break, it needs a break job or this or that, but, you know, older. More, more tiny put on vehicle, um, and those are the ones that usually have over a hundred. Um, plus thousand miles on it too, so. Um, our shop pickups, um, just on twenty four, we replaced one, um, our. Shop pickups, um, those. Are kind of our. Well, it has a crane on this, um, not all of them. When I say shop pickups. One of them has just like a lift, it's a single, single cab has a lift and then the. Other. One of them has a crane, the other. Kind of, uh, you know, utility boxes on the back, so. No one really bought in twenty four, it's a utility box, but, um. Cranes, so that, you know, say. Needs to do work at some other shed or something like that, they can lift or, you know, do all that sort of stuff. Um, let's see here, uh, just versus sign trucks, I need twenty five. Um, then. This to go on, um, our single axles, our tandem axles. Um. Can I see there where I have a three crossed out and a two and on the tandems of thirteen to twelve? Um. I don't know how about.
You sold a good bonus.
Uh, I will be selling now.
Okay.
So that's why I kind of have them crossed out because we. Um, the two thousand twelve, um, we're using a box, the box off of that and putting it on one of our older Max. To try to, remember old Max was. The box was shot and it, and rather than, you know. Dumping a whole bunch of money into like rehabbing a box, we want to have. This box was gonna be, um. Twenty, this twenty twelve was the transmission was bad. It was kind of the first year, um, they started doing death and so it had. Whole bunch of definite issues and the terror max, or no. Maxed. I'd have to make sure I said the right. Engine, but, um. Uh. But that's one of the ones where the engine, because they've already replaced the engine in that one. And then when I first got here, it, it will all suck. Um, that's why we're trying to put. Money back into the engine where. We only got three or four years when, when they put that in there, so, um. On our sink, so I guess for our guys, we got four main line guys, um, in tandem. Axle trucks, um, we have eight spares, um, and then. Eleven, eleven of those are snow routes. So we just have one, um, kind of there to, you know, say. Or goes down or something like that, we have one to kind of build them again. There are a, uh, single axle trucks, we have. Two of them, the twenty twelves internationals, um, those are ones, if you look at our. Staffing, um, they're the ones that we typically have. For years, um, we have. Three accelerator operators and they have two, the single axle truck drivers, they kind of. Bounced in between. Between the guys depending on what we got going on, um. And moderators. Um, we have seventeen moderators, twelve of those are mainline, um, so. All of our, the guys that you see here on this list, all of them have. A moderator, um, on that. The staffing chart, uh, our moderator operators, and then we have. A lot of those that are spare, um, and then there's four winter routes. Um. That we have run off of those seventeen, um, moderators, so then. We have. So sixteen, so and then we have an. Extra one for spare as well, kind of. Kind of like our tandems where, say, you know, one of those older machines goes down, we have another one, I can kind of replace that while we're trying to. Fix it up. And then also. Dozers, we have two dozers, uh, but. We also have, I guess. Don't have on there, we do have some scrickers, but they have not been used in. I think since they got rid of a. Dirt grading crew, so. They see, seen better days. Um, and we haven't used those. And then we got three end monitors, um. So we have ten, ten Patrick trailers, right now we're having half nine that are, um. Operational and then we have. One of that probably. In a week or two, uh, would be a, would be a, would be gone. Then, uh, I guess. I think I'm near at the belly dung trailers, that would be something we'd have to. Purchase, um, that, that's where we're kind of working to see. Which, which op and option to go with, uh. Guess with that, we have. Our two tractor, truck tractors or semis. Uh, we just purchased one of those semis just this past, like, last year to help out with. Um, we had two flatbeds and one semi, so. Uh, or we can kind of divide and conquer, not use the same, yeah. With having a bridge group and then one, uh, one of our next. Uh. Tracks, track excavator, so that one needs to be hauled, hauled around. The other two, uh. Are ones are great, all the ones they, uh, wield can, so those can. Uh, move, move around, um, the grade all more than that, the cat, the cat kind of stays. A little bit, little approach to the helmet we can, so. Um. We gotta see how we have. Five excavators. Four of those are, uh. That got bridge, bridge crew and then three, three are mainline excavators and then one spare, um. We used that spare quite a bit last year when we had one of our. Great also that, so it's, it's another, the, that's fair is another grave. Um, let's see. We have two snow blowers, um. They're from the nineteen eighties, they've seen better days, um, we use them. I think that's. Year we had maybe a week of bad winter, um, we had those out there. Sorry to kind of keep those where. Don't want to get rid of them, but at the same time they're trying to keep on maintenance and whatnot to keep them. Uh, up and going, this, this kind of tricky with parts and all that stuff, so. Um, and then we have a road grader, we haven't, um. Just use that one. As much as, um, initially. Um, our newest tractor that we had purchased. I thought, uh, that was gonna be able to have enough horsepower to pull that, uh. Unfortunately, uh, the only thing that can. Well, that is one of our single axle trucks. Uh. We haven't. We tried to rent, um. A truck last year or I tried to do last year to try to see. If we ended up purchasing one of more horsepower, how it worked, uh, but. Had, had that a lot, but. Just the one we'd read, so it was just. Um, so that's one we're. Just trying to figure out how to find a guy and find time to kind of. Put, put that in our cut. Or, or, or two blocks or what we use. Then, um, I guess I have roadside roadside. Uh. That's, um, used to. All those purchases used to come with the, the roadside, um, budget for the road clearing. Um, budget, those, um. Came through the general fund, um, that we no longer have, um, but those were the kind of. We have. But our mower tractors. Three of them are. I believe use those are the ones when we, uh, have our mower guys, uh, in the summer. Um, you know, through May to, uh, beginning August and then August they're off and then they come here. Back in September to move, um, move on fall, so three are pretty, you got. Ones that have quite a few hours on it, um, we have one that's more of a brush, uh. More than one of us. Kind of her. Her spare that we try to, that one's. Trying not to use that as much as it's. It's, it's seen better days and. That's. I don't know if the rat trapped. Uh, name would mean anything of, it's, it's rough. Uh, that's, that's what it's, it's one of our spares. Um, and then, um. Uh, always. Tractor is the one, um, we just purchased, we use that for, um. For doing a lot of, uh, redrates with. All that around to, uh, do compaction on our sheep's foot, I mean, yeah, so. And. Yeah, but. I skid up a spater. These brake trucks, basket truck and I. It's like kind of. Ran down through the list of what we got. Um. To talk about, um. Yes, I know it kind of looks like with. You know, having. Ten, uh. Up trailers with, uh, ten axle trucks that we had, I was worried like, uh. It's, yeah, yeah. And that we can get out there, but then we have. We've got four guys that are main, mainline and then we have. You know. You start. Taking some of other guys, you know. Maybe some moderators out there, what they're doing. To, you know, get into trucks. Um, not that we don't do that, we have. You know, a rainy day or whatnot, we have them, you know, sometimes go out there. Take care of their tools that they got, because. They will be out waiting, because. They're up waiting, they're just making lots of costs. And so I guess that's. I don't know. Where, I guess, with management, management structure, I guess, I have kind of this. Out there for you guys.
Before you go on, on that, did anybody have any questions on the equipment stuff? The, the reason why I asked for this is because we were. Sure, we then had some. Comments about how many trucks we had and. And how many we had, and so I wanted to check in and if we have. Twelve tandem axles and two single axles. We have. Ten pup trailers, like historically, when it happened, there were six drivers at one time and two of them were cut. And. Um. So they were full time and then they use the salaries and insurance and all that kind of stuff to do the contract rock, from what I understand. And that was done before your time from what I. Just doing some, some checking around. So. If it's a, um. We have that many trucks. But not enough people to drive them or the. Are there any, you said there's times if it's raining that employees are able to haul rock, uh, are you guys stockpiling? Is it like going right on the road when you guys are bringing it back or?
Um, I mean, in the winter time, we're usually set, because we're. We have a place in Chelsea that we. Uh, area is pretty. Decent area there, we can stockpile, um, we can stockpile at our shop. Uh, and then. I guess trailer, um, we, we stockpile on the trailer as well.
Okay, the tractor on the roadside equipment, is that, that's just a tractor?
And that's. It had, it had the. As a. Batwing more, it does have a batwing more.
But that's the one you're using for a sheep's foot.
Correct.
And that's the one that's not big enough to pull the gomer.
Well, that was, that was purchased. When I first got here, so. That was. I. Made the assumption that. I was. On me, I didn't look into it as much as I should have. Of.
Wouldn't take the horsepower or even to pull that room.
Because. I, I had written it down at one point, I had, I don't. Right now.
Not new one, that one or nine?
Uh. You mean, uh.
That front, the front row says.
Yeah, I think. Eight oh nine.
Eight oh nine. Be Todd.
Yeah, Todd, one, one of Todd's.
Yeah.
I mean, one of, and.
So who runs a sheep's foot and that stuff? I mean, what guy do you pull off to put there?
Um, a lot of, um, either, you know, excavator operator, we got it. If our, we don't have, um, one guy's, you know, pretty good, we only need two guys to be pulled back from there, um. Have to kind of shift around. You go, we got to. Sit in there and do it.
And then when we did your, did budgeting and stuff, you had it budgeted in there for another rock caller guy?
Correct, I did, and then I received. I don't know, the, the budget prompt road planning, I absorbed that. And so.
We took that out, took that out.
No, I took that out because I took in two employees along with. The spring and the. That, that sort of things. Because I was kind of at the very end where it's just. Because I was kind of at the very end where it's just trying to. Trying to get things to.
Any other questions on equipment?
I'm gonna guess some mulcher type for that, for this, skid steer, do you have something you can go cut brush with that?
Yeah, the skid steer has a, like, I got a mulching head, uh, uh, in the front, so.
That were pretty slick.
Yeah, it was. Over there. West of, uh. To leave over there, um, and then a few other. Spots where, um. Obviously, there's spots where. They have a. More than one to one slope that. Other guys in there, but. Some of those, even more mainly both slopes or platter areas. Do some good with that, so.
Are you done? Do we have any with? That's not listed on here. That is excess. To your, your function. Do we still have that extra for the old sign truck?
Correct, we do have that old sign.
So how, how much of the equipment do we have that's not listed on here that we could sell, needs to be salvaged, will put.
I had hair, I have, uh. I mean, we have. The next couple of weeks, we're going to be selling that tandem and that standalone axle group truck. And then we also have, I think. Oh, there's another one that we're really just shooting as parts, it was another single axle that we're using for first, first sign now. Um, we have some. Gosh, it's kind of like a. Road reclamer. That hasn't been in touch in like. Twenty, thirty years, so we're getting rid of that, uh, yeah, the trailer, like, uh, some. The bridge crew used to use, uh, that we're getting rid of. Is it a flatbed? But it's, uh, no, it's like an enclosed, an enclosed trailer.
So like, do you have a, a list like this, everything that we have?
I, I guess, like the sheet, this is where like, I, I thought this was a little bit easier to read, the other one, I have like a. Equipment list that has each number and like. It usually has on the side, maybe if it's spare or who runs it, you know. Uh, I can, I can give that to you guys as well.
But are the numbers that are on here, are those the equipment number?
Three one, three eleven, the, you know, one or three, three one nine would be another. Their number, uh.
That would be helpful when I heard Kurt say something about eight oh nine or one on air. Wasn't sure what you were talking about, if it was an employee number, if that's an equipment number, so you do have equipment numbers.
Yes, yeah, I guess. I was, I was like, just.
No, that's all right. That would be helpful for us, I think, just to, if we're looking at what equipment is out there, so we know that what needs to be. What you have for. Selling and what we, what dollars we have available to replace some of it, then at what year each. If you have one that's brand new, it's not going to be replaced forever, however many years, and so at that budget year, then you're going to be replacing that. That would be helpful.
I guess that's. Yes.
No, I mean, like each equipment number, so if you had, if you had like numbers, if you had like number. If you had like eight oh nine, then you're like, it's gonna be replaced in ten years, maybe you get a couple more years out of it, but just what's the desired date?
He probably already have it done, just to split it out and divide equipment, I think is what he's asking.
Yeah. I got your generalization, you know, that's helpful too, but just for the specific equipment, whatever you have.
Yeah, this is also like, and that was, or part of this video. Stuff that we can spell salvage, scrap metal, whatever it is. Just so we know what all we have. And for that road grader, you said they, they can only pull by one bit that we have?
Correct, yes.
Do we need to? Trade that tractor in since it's barely moving, get a more powerful one or? I mean, have we used that road graver recently, it's not, we talked about that.
Straight use it last year, um. Blades, I just don't. Hopefully, so. Uh, I guess, I don't think. Just. Looked into that to see if that would be an option, I don't believe it.
Could you try renting one again, you said it didn't work well because of the tractor, could you just go rent one again and try it? Because I mean, like you said, road group was twenty five thousand, you said it would work, I mean, it works.
The other. They're using the heck out of them, they work really good.
Yeah, we've had so much washout this year, it'd be nice to, there's plenty of roads to go try it on, just rent something for. Short amount of time and. See if it works.
Either that or just call a. Call a dealership and say, this is what I got. What do you have in the bullet? By the way, why don't you bring one out and try it?
Yeah, let me try it, see if it works.
Get, get them to bring it up there to your. Yeah, we need to do that, I mean. These people are trying to sell us stuff, I mean, there's no reason for us not to ask them to get demonstration.
If you're coming so much faster and when they're not cutting the edge, they can just.
I demo stuff all the time.
Um, so yeah, if, if there's anything else, if there's anything else we need to. Obviously, you should come up with a plan to. Dispose of it in a light way, whether selling it or even. Is it, the, you. Is that old sign truck being sold or traded in, I didn't know, sorry, Victor, um. That's where we've been kind of, um, thought was to. Use it for. For true or whatnot, and we have a whole bunch of other. So it's still, it's, it's still a useful piece of equipment?
Yeah, okay.
If you want to give us a. That other list, Ben, with what your plan is to, and you kind of do some modifications when you would. How long do you need to do that to be able to give it to us?
To do it, I, I, I was more. Yeah, I guess overview, um, so if there was specific equipment numbers, I have. The specific equipment number list, um, but I have to kind of. Get that moved over to something that looks more closer to this.
Then like when it was bought and then when it would need to be replaced and how much that is.
I guess I have that for the motor grinders, um, because that's.
The biggest.
Figure ticket I am, and we have a lot of. But I can. Do that for the other, the trucks and all the things.
Okay, would thirty days be reasonable?
Yeah.
But when you decide what, like, what's your deciding factor on that stuff, like, when it's your close, you're going by hours, are you going by, are you? Going by what? Operator says or? Uh, for, or they have like an actual maintenance? Schedule follow or for?
Motor graders, we have. I think with the newer ones that have a lot more, uh, technology and, um. Wiring, um, letting it go. Go fast, um, and talking with. They were telling him that it'd be about ten years for, for machine, um, I think, for the one of the motors that went down and died there. Um, that we had to. By, you know, the engine and kind of do that whole brief, uh, overhaul. Um, now about hundred seven thousand. Um, and that gave us another four. Three, fourish years, but some of them aren't yet on there. Um, that's where. It's hard with some of those motor grader, once they kind of go off warranty that. We're gonna be, um, paying some big bucks, um, and so that's. My thought is to do, um, ten years to try that out, you know. Only a couple of years, I think, the most recent ones we purchased, uh, had. Eight year or seven, and, and off the top of my head, remember, um. But that gives us a few years of, you know. Leeway on that. On the. Tandem axles, um. We've actually, those, you know, maybe three that are. Oh, we have three that are two thousand fours, um, we, but, you know. One in the fall that we. Re welded to, or ten hours, we have loaded it up, um, because the box was going bad in it. Um, and then. And we're using that one on. The twenty twelve box on one of the boxes for this other one to try to. Help those out to keep them. Or, or given us a more, more time, so, uh. Uh, our. Things. I guess the big. Big thing would be. I guess motor grader is the one that we got the most of, and it's the most expensive, so. Yes, I'm trying to remember what your question was, or if I even answered it. How are, how are you, what's your determinant factor determining traction? I mean, like, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, hours and years, I guess the motor, motor grader, if we get over like ten thousand hours. I, that's where roughly about, about, we can usually gauge about a thousand hours a year out of a motor grader, um.
I know Bob, way back in Bob's number, he'd get trucks every five. And I think that kind of got a little wishy washy with Lyle. I don't know exactly what that.
Pick up trucks to remind you. Yeah, so. Um. So that, I mean. I think, oh, I think I have your fif- fifteen years, um, just because. Two thousand fours that we have are. Run like they're lumping along.
And that was when they went to spares.
Yeah, yeah.
So every five years they'd get new ones for the. The mainline ones, and then those would go to spares and then that really old ones.
Okay, are we satisfied on that? And go to the staffing structure, I think you were starting to get into there, Ben?
Uh, yes. Yes, there you go, we have kind of our shop foreman, um, foreman and office manager. Our main, uh. Our, the charge, um, and then also work with the, um. Assistant foreman as well as on, on those different things down there. Um, let's see here. We have kind of all of our motor grader hours and tandems are kind of under our foreman. Um, and then, you, you know, they just. Work with each other on, you know, we got a reading project or whatnot, um, kind of have. And about between the two, um, you know, how you. Sometimes we have an excavator operator on, on our grading projects, just depends. And so. And they gotta work together. And then. I mean, they're kind of, uh, the assistant foremen is kind of. That of the, the lead to the bridge, bridge crew that we got going on, um, got a lot of them, um. A, all right, this, these are kind of the structures that we wanted to replace this year, um, kind of trying to get it scheduled together, um. See what we do to get that, get that done, so. Um, uh. You know, when we receive complaints and kind of. Um, things like that, um, that kind of goes in our work order system. Through the kind of service bureau, uh, our county engineers service bureau has kind of a. Work order system so we can kind of track, um. And there's a point at this road where, hey, we have. This cord. It can kind of be either internal, like, hey, we know. There's a cord that's bad in this area, um. Right now, we're gonna. We don't have time to get to it, but it's a. You kind of prioritize what's, what's important there. Has any charge of kind. Goes out there.
Questions? My, my first one would be, what is the rationale behind the numbers, like year nine point one?
That'd be my, that's the unit, that's my truck.
This vehicle.
All right. I thought I heard that, I just wanted to make sure it was.
That's the call, numbers two on the radio.
So how many of these people work, do all these folks typically work during vacation? Or is anybody working night shift?
I mean, they're all six to six to four thirty right now.
When, when do they go back?
They'll be going back here.
So. And they're broken down by.
Yeah, they're broken down by function, so, um, yeah. Split apart is because, uh, previously there was two, um, uh, east and west, um, so this is kind of. But the motor grader operators and then tandem drivers that work with those. They go better. And that same kind of goes for the excavator operators that they. Particularly that St. Black school. On, you know, they should be more, uh.
So Tim's got all these guys under him that he's in charge of, right?
Correct.
And then Nick has just these few over here. Want to make more sense to split this up a little bit better to have more coverage? Because I don't see how one guy can take care of it. It's nineteen guys. Versus nine. And then what's the construction tech do, what's that guy do?
He works on projects that we got going on, um.
I mean, like, what's, what's shooting?
And, you know, like on SF and our department, I'll leave out there inspecting, um.
So is he the one, like, when it's pouring concrete for the bridges, he inspects that on, right? That's what I thought, I'm sure.
I, I also question the division of labor, I mean.
It's always got, Tim's got a lot of people to follow up on every day. Always a two foreman system.
Right.
I mean. And then we went to one foreman.
I mean, there's many.
Was Lyle still here or not?
Uh, that just, I think, when I just got on, just kind of. Ended it up.
From what I hear, this, this isn't working well.
Well, for the, for what the roads look like and all the things that we had, I understand that it's been, the weather's not been a great, but. I don't see how that guy can manage all them guys. And. Yeah, and drive eleven hundred miles of road, check it all out. I think we need to do something different here because this obviously isn't working.
And that's possible, I mean, there's nothing saying you can't go back to foreman.
What was the rationale for not replacing him? Um, like when the, the. Previous, there were two divided.
Yeah.
In, in the county, what was the rationale for not replacing that system and going to the system?
I think the rationale is, you know, you have east and west half, and, you know. There was definitely times where. You know. East and the west half would fight between. You know, east and the west half would fight between, oh, I want the excavator operator over here, or, you know, obviously, we have. Two, um, on either side, but then there's that third one and trying to, you know. There can be that of like. I know I've heard of stories of, you know, we rock, but we only rock to the. The county line, and we wouldn't rock any further because that was the other, the other forms. That is area or you. Come into the, you know, tear up the other guys' road to do yours, and, you know, it just. I think the thought, uh, and I know. The county I was up in, yeah, had a single foreman, main foreman, um, and then assistant foreman. Now, it seemed to work. Be well up there that way, um. All that. Yeah, there's ways that we can kind of maybe improve this or. Get a better. But I I guess I'd be. Not opposed to, you know. We could have. Some task force or, uh, I, you know, two supervisors, myself and the foreman, you know, ones to try to. You know, figure out something that can either work work a little bit better or. It's not really opposed to that.
So what was it that you're agreeing to propose?
I that we have, you know, two, uh, couple of super, uh, good words. Two supervisors, uh, myself and, um, run the foreman to try to, you know, figure out what what we can do to, you know. Try to improve, um, what we got going on.
Okay, so was that agreeable or? Well, to everybody, or is is it? I I think just the consensus that we would had have is that what is your, what is your thought, you know?
My thought would be to have two foremans like we used to, and if they can't get along, then they're not the right foremans for that job. The whole idea is to get along and communicate and, you know, run this, I mean, if you're. Your business, Ben, we should be happy with the way that it's going. You know, think of it that way, but think of it that way, um, but. You know, I heard there was always conflict between the supervisory and road foreman, but which. That becomes a a management deal too, so, you know, um, I I just, I think it's, obviously what we're doing here is not working.
And if if I had somebody stop because that's not my area, but I'm still on the block. That becomes your problem to fix, and just say, look, knock it off, guys, we are a team. Yeah, yeah, you work the east side, well, I don't care north, south, yeah, I don't care which way it is, but. You know, if your if your task for today is to drive him on road D, whatever road P is. Then you're going to do road B. If you encroach the other area, that's fine, it's part of your team's. The job to take care of, I, we can't have people determining themselves on a road, I'm not going to do. It's if. It it sounds to me like. And this still sounds to me like the hammer needs to be dropped. A little bit, and hold people accountable, if it's your job to do this, do it. I mean, that.
It's union, but what we're talking about now has nothing to do with the union, these are all, these are all supervisory positions that are. So that would bring a question, maybe for Paul to, um. Clarify, if if we wanted to go to two foreman structure. According to, um, the agreement that we have with Ben, would that be something that is, uh? Can we lay that out as supervisors, uh, structurally, or does that have to be? Um, something that he would implement?
I think, um, I don't think they don't, then tell me if I'm wrong, I don't know that there's anything in his contract that talks about. Hiring or firing, so because of that, I think it falls back to the board, but I think the board wanted to, you could say. Here's the new structure we want to put in place. Now, here's a deadline for it to have. Assuming it's a truly supervisory position, then they can be part of the union, so the union would impose in any part of it.
Now, having having one of. Three hundred and fifty people at a time, uh, there is no end world, I would. Have used this format. Uh, you you can't, you can't. Honestly supervise, oversee, manage, whatever term you want to use. People like this. I mean, with with, um, what's the Tim's Tim's team? Then we've had been two supervisors associated or assistant supervisors associated with that, just a, just a. For management, I think the two foreman idea is probably the smart way to go, and then. Maybe I'm not as smart as I thought I was, but when it comes to the excavators and motor graders. What's the difference in their tasks?
Motor grader operator is in charge of, you know, taking care of their, you know, they have about. Who's seventy-four miles of gravel road, um, additional. But dirt and, uh, roads as well, but, um, is there seventy-four hundred ninety? Oh, I think it was. Oh, I looked it up and it's like eight hundred and ninety-one miles of gravel we have. Uh, and so then divide it up into all, yeah, seventy-four, sort of.
Okay, and then the excavator, what does they do? They dig, they dig holes?
They dig ditches and culverts or, you know.
Okay.
So what do those guys do when they're not digging? Are they supposed to be rock balling or?
I mean, going from project to project, those excavator operators, you know. And then kind of go from, I mean, say, yeah, if. On a rainy. They do a rainy day, yeah, they can go and have.
So are are they do, are they doing that rock balling on a rainy day or not?
I mean, there's some times where they're, you know, if it's, you know, you're working on their equipment or, you know, doing that, um, but yeah. And that's something to. Be done and tell, tell them, so.
So. I had I had some car time today and I was thinking about this, do you have a list of tasks? That if it's a rainy day, David, that I'm obviously as intended, normally I would dig holes, but I can't because it's money. Do you have a list for me to do outside of that? Or who sit around and wait for the rain to stop, the ground to dry? I I I literally. I I would think that with all the stuff you have underneath your your authority, you would have a list of things that need to be done in a specific order, like. You know, like that's a do list, but the most priority, you know, the highest priority first, and then so David comes in, can't work as an excavator. Then David's got, goes over his list, oh, I've got to go help the bridge crew, I've got to go clean toilet, I don't care what it is. You know, it's a task that's underneath your your responsibility that David goes and does that rather than sit around. Or if I have to help out, uh, if I if I'm working for Nick and I have to help out Tim, fine. Nick tells Tim, hey, David's coming over your crew, he's got whatever's on your to-do list, so if. Do you have that?
Yeah, I mean, we have guys. You know, look like.
But do I know that if I if I come in on a rainy day, do I know that? Because it's raining, I can't do it, I'm I'm going to be detailed to do X, whatever X is, I mean, there. That that's why I say, I I see that we need to have a list of stuff to do, I I believe is Nick. Nick's assistants over, I would assume Nick that would be bumped up to foreman east, foreman west, north and south, whatever, I would be dividing this up. And then he would have a list of things that he would make sure that David, if I'm working on his crew, David knows that he's going to go do this. There there's so much that needs to be done, and I think I think more organization is needed, and then supervisor overseeing. Then you hold those supervisors out of. In a nice way, because you're getting too many phone calls, you're getting, I think you're getting a lot of stuff from us. You know, and I try not to bother you, other than my all all ways style. And and that bridge, I don't think they've still fixed that.
Yeah.
Uh, where the where those three things are missing, um, I don't know how important that is from a safety perspective, if they're missing out. The guardrail, but. Rather than having you have that all come in from us, there's still going to be stuff coming in, but if you if you task your foreman to go, hey, go drive down whatever road. And if there's anything missing from the guardrails, mark it, and then just assign those tasks, and all these guys and gals and gals will pull up. What they're they're the task duty, if they have nothing else to do, go all rock or salt or whatever. Needs to be, uh, staged for this upcoming winter.
I don't think, there's always a broad thing, you know, you don't have the two, two, three, four day days, then it's always like maintenance. It rains that first day, you you grease, you change oil, you know, clean up the shop. It was set.
Does Pat run the egg?
I don't, no, no, he's he's talking individually. Nine one, if I was in nine one nine, that's my truck.
Right.
Can you take it to your shop?
Yeah, yeah, and so who checks to make sure you did that instead of sitting around smoking a joke? I I'm not saying let's come down hard on people, but if if things aren't getting done. Then somebody's responsible for overseeing, you have to have them answer you, and and I don't want you to. You know, go out and check every shop, you've got to be able to delegate and trust that you delegate to, they're doing the job. Um, I mean, you. Yeah.
Oh, that's a couple. Couple of good points, I, uh, just to summarize one thing, uh, I think the management structure, we probably want that to look different. Um, as a consensus, but I think we need to put it on the board agenda so that we can give him direction, I wouldn't assume that we're just going to move Nick right into that role. We'll talk about that as supervisors and determine what that would look like, but, um, you could expect some direction out of us. For that, now that we kind of know what that structure looks like. For now, nothing until you're directed differently, okay?
Other question I had is, so since the Salt Creek project's going on, my understanding is they're managing the roads. What are those two motor grader operators doing? Are they helping out the roads or? I was just thinking about that today, what have they been doing the last several months since they can't be doing their own? Because I I looked at the circle and it's pretty well, there's about two colors, so two people.
I some of them have been, uh, you know, a lot of other other guys, uh, the one that just.
Was the one the vacant spot?
The one that's a big, uh, speaking, because I I guess it'll be the twenty-first, it'll be vacant. Um, but, I mean, he. He's been, there's some work we've had, had to send down along those roads, because, um, they have to. With the weather and whatnot, they. Their priorities haven't been much as over the blight on the road, so we're. Having some of the guys take care of some of those spots there, um, and I'll pitch it. Had them help out on on different projects or not.
Okay, I still, there's a lot of washouts, I was just thinking if these guys aren't doing those roads, can they be doing others, if they need to be getting done, if they're not getting them done, then obviously, let's take care of them, but. Still, anybody sitting, which, not saying they are, I'm just, I just thought of that today.
But thinking back in on the fact that we've got a vacant spot. In your hiring process, you have a whole bunch of people signing up. Because the future union, right, the union position. Is there anything wrong with Ben going to the number two guy that he didn't select for number one, I'll select? To hire, or do we have to go back to?
Did anybody want this internally yet? Have you posted internally?
We've posted.
Okay, all right.
Well, depends, we had the original Vinsdale, one that just went down, then with the original trailer, so I guess it depends which list, would we go, I mean, and it's been. How many months ago was that? January?
It's been January, yeah.
So those people, it's, they might have moved on or. You'd probably have to get a list.
Is there a, we have something that you have to be here so long that did? I mean, I I wouldn't guess that kid from that.
I don't think there's any necessarily. The, uh, because I've got us, that's with the. Uh, the unions kind of, they've taken that out, uh. Well, that was the state. Uh, with the bidding grants, uh, with the unions. The state, the state took out.
That could be, that could be. I know that's the way it used to be, you know, if somebody with job came up and we first get hired, you're. X miles away and one opens up right near town, it's kind of silly not to be able to be on it, you know, end up in your own town, but.
Was it based on seniority?
Yep, yep, yes.
But that doesn't exist now? That, you know, okay.
I just had to ask the question.
Nope, that's right.
So like, let's just, so I can understand this, so like on this morning, when you come into work, do you? Go to foreman? And and say, okay, this is what we, this is what we need to get done today? Or this week, or do you have a week's plan, or how do you, you know, and then how does, how does? How do all them guys get their to-do list?
Well, I mean, usually.
I mean, do you have a to-do list for all week, or are you just day by day?
Or like our main maybe projects that we have going on, um, but like, you know, the guys. Blading, they'll just go blade, you know, blade his roads, um, let's see, you know, if there's. Um, truck driving or or on a rock, you know, they might be, you know, checking who's wanted there, you know. If it's not really a project going on, and we kind of rely on our guys to communicate to to each other and also to, you know. If that's what they were doing last week. Go ahead and do that this week, you know, like if you. There's a certain project on one of the roads, you know, we're doing a rebranding or, you know, for those, um. Guys that are excavator operators, you know, okay, we're not done with that project, but let's continue on that or, um. You know, small things pop up like, um, okay, you know, let's spray a patch or. Hey, you know, it's raining out, let's get some cool patch and patch, you know. So, you know, perform a lot of, I don't know. Yeah, it's raining out, using both passions, so, I mean, there's.
So is that from you then to the foreman or does the foreman just?
We're, I mean, I mean, we talk and we can communicate what we're wanting to.
Are you going to day to day, to day basis?
Yeah, just like, you know, how's it work?
It's usually the foreman's, when when I first started, we had phones, and he'd call every shed. Your foreman call your shed and say, hey, you do this, you do this, and you do this. But he's talking like the bigger projects, what that involves him a little more, yes, the bigger, you know, like the level one or a, clean the ditch. Raising the road, that kind of stuff, but the day-to-day stuff, if you're a blade man, you're you're a blade man, you have your route. You need some glade, and if you're chuck driving, you need to. Gravel, chuck drive usually does get told with, you know, word of hall. The blade man, he has his route, he does, you know, if I got my, if I got. Tip fifteen miles down my route yesterday, I'm going to go do the next, you know, I mean, and that's just.
And you know, you know, oh, we had an inch of rain. The ones that have been there and I feel like once. Somebody's got his, you know, they've had. You know, more than, more they get familiar with the route, they know what areas are bad, um, and that's, you know, you have to kind of. You know, be more, pay more attention to or run that route more often, uh. And I mean, we do, um, when we have them there, it's kind of like, okay, we know that this route is, um, kind of joined. Uh, the trailer position, that was like PB Avenue, uh, QQ Avenue, um. Uh, one that goes across, uh, let me throw, you know, those different routes there, you know. Those are heavily traveled, make sure you, you know, that's one you you need to keep up on, um. Try to kind of install the newer ones, like if they don't know. What routes are more heavily traveled or. Yeah, you know, all this, you know, this. Yeah, you know, all this, you know, this road gets washouts because the wind hills are.
How long does it take for a blade man, just on average, to get through a route?
I mean, probably a more. Experienced one. I think. One of them that being. He's gonna have for two weeks.
Waited after two weeks?
Yep.
What would be a long period of time for somebody not to complete a route?
Yeah, long period of time, I guess. Eight.
A month.
You're talking to those phone calls, saying, hey, I've seen the blade.
Yeah, if there's somebody, if there's somebody, and I've been to the places and I believe it, you know, there's some places where I've been and I believe that there's. Been an extended period of time where they haven't seen their blade man, and so I think there's valid concern there, just, I just need to know what to tell them, you know, if it's been. A month and you haven't seen your blade man, you might want to call, you know, let us know. Uh, but three weeks isn't unusual, but two months would be a really long time, right?
Or if there's a gap, do they need training? Do they need someone else to come help finish because we got all this rain and it's horrible or something?
Yeah, and we have rain days, I mean, I was just asking for an average. Yep, but you hit it very.
And it goes, you know, goes back to what Ben said, they're putting on for hours on their blades, a thousand hours a year, well, there's twenty, not twenty eighty in a working year for hours. So. You know, take out some of that harsh stuff, weather and stuff like that, so I would say. I would, I would say it should probably be around fifteen hundred hour a year, they should be putting on.
There are, yeah, I agree they could be, but there are times they shouldn't be out when it's dry.
Yep, no doubt about it.
And if we don't have any snow, they're gonna be steady. But I'm not disagreeing.
That's what I'm, that's what I was looking at.
So this year, like when it's raining all the time, I mean, just.
They're plenty of rain.
So that that's my question, what's it to do with a sport grader, I think, motor grader isn't, it's raining and you can't do it again?
Stay busy.
Doing what? Greasing the truck again?
Washing your truck.
Yeah, but yeah, maintenance, that's what, that's not one of these maintenance and leadership.
You know, like in Benton County, each road grader guy gets the mower tractor for two weeks and he mows all the.
I'd like to see, I've talked about that myself, you know.
That we have to have. Four part time guys or whatever it is, I mean, that's, that's the way they do it over there.
I I think in another meeting I mentioned, let's find out what are the best practices? Make sure that that's what we're doing, one of the best practices. I'm not talking about abusing abusing people, this. My expectation is when you're at work, you're gonna work and it's a, it's a. A meaningful task, not sweeping the floor, one direction, then sweeping it all back in.
In this situation, there's a lot of times, so there's really nothing to do that you can't do, if you get, if you get those things you need to get done, done, then. There's times you just, there's nothing, you know. I'm not gonna go out and cut brush in the rain, if I don't, you know, I mean, that's, that's, I'm saying.
When is it not feasible to haul rock?
I I wouldn't, if I was the boss, I wouldn't let it, if it was a hard rain, four, five, I'd keep them off, two day rain, I'd keep them off.
Not just to stockpile rock.
Oh, stockpile? Yeah, we've never stockpiled in the summer, we've always kind of done. It's usually the fall, I mean. No. It's just one of those things.
It's a needful thing, that's what I mean, needful work, not busy work, right?
I mean, we have been, I think, in our town, in our old stores, we've been. Going through random stuff that we have all these different snowball attachments. Getting rid of those and. And then having to try to take care of that, so. Yeah, a bunch of that stuff that. Goes to hold equipment or doesn't. I think a lot of our problem in the constraints that we're getting is in. What they're, what they're doing or will not do against how it's getting done. And I think the roads is, I don't think it's lack of work. I just think the people, these guys, for example, they just keep cutting, they just keep cutting the edges and. How many phone calls I know, I get them all the time. There's a four inch lift over here, you know, there's an eight inch lift going by driveway, I was telling them not to cut, but. It's it, I think we gotta find some way, if these people have some pride in their work. And and try to do something, do it right, you know, um. Yeah, I. Some of the practices, it's like, I think that goes where you said, what we're doing isn't working for, you know, and there's, like I've said a hundred times, there are problems out there, you know, equipment's huge, rock's not that good, our roads are wide and so wide that we can't. Keeping up rock, um, um, there's things out of the art of control that. And training's really pathetic, to be honest, with. Blades, I mean, you go to Ames, you sit in a classroom for. What, a day or whatever, but.
Is there other options in that? I don't, yeah, like to actually go physically do it?
I mean, I know that there's some different options, it's gonna be more, even more expensive.
It'd be worth it if you can get a good, you know, it's a thousand bucks and send a guy to get the training.
Is it, is it valuable? Would there be any value in the days that we are done with all of our busy work and and whatnot? Is there any value in the scheduling and training for people to come in? I don't know what you guys' training looks like for. Like what I do, we have to have a certain amount of hours every year just to keep up on training and techniques and all of those kind of things. Is there anything that you guys do or offer for people who are. Um, continuously operating machine for years and years and years and kind of get stuck in, you know, their way of doing it. Um, to train new techniques or anything like that?
Um, I mean, the only thing we really have is safety trains that we we go over. That kind of stuff would be offered. From somebody else, like I will say in your version, that's where we go, they go for maintenance sometimes and road. Local train. Roadwork, you know, it's. L TAP, those local transport, I forget what the.
Long term.
No, no, it's locals, uh, the L TAP and maybe it's, uh, for, you know. I'll try to think, um, flagging, um, training.
Like.
Uh, that's one of them.
But then they set their dates up.
Yeah.
Where they're.
So what about like peer to peer? Obviously you have employees that perform at a very high level that don't receive all of the complaints, and then you have people that are receiving more complaints. Do you do any peer to peer type trainings?
Um, usually not, uh. I guess the thing I know. Talking with another guy that can do that, but then obviously that. A little different because they're not union, so. That's, that's where it kind of gets, I guess. I would. I wouldn't be opposed to those, I mean, guys that were talking with each other and, you know. You know, when we're doing like a great wood project or like a. Regraded some sort of, you know, we try to put, you know, maybe a more experienced guy with a less experienced guy, so they could kind of bounce. You know, ideas off each other and now look, you know. That's what we kind of try to do, uh, it's not necessarily a training. Specific that we. Uh, you have to train this person or, uh, I don't.
Yeah, so do you have regular meetings with the, your employees to discuss their performance? I don't, I don't know unless I'm asking the question, I'm, I'm used to having them checked every six months. And then had a politics role evaluation too, that somebody went behind me and and looked to see if I was. Performing correctly, I mean, that. It it. I I hated them, but then it made me a better person, a better performer. So I mean, at, at some point in time, if you're diff, we'll just pick on David when, so I'm, I'm the motor grader. And I suck at motor grading and I get, you know, more complaints than anybody else on your team. Then my expectation would be that somebody's going to come, probably my boss. And say, hey, I'm getting a lot of complaints, here's what the complaints are, I've watched you. You're not doing the edges correctly, you're cutting the crown off, uh, you're dumping rock into the ditch you shouldn't be doing now. But I mean, some, at some point in time, somebody's not performing, we've got to have some type of meeting with them. To explain our expectations and then some type of a quality control evaluation to make sure that they're doing what you tell them to do. People do what you inspect and not what you expect. Some old crusty guy told me that a long time ago, he was right.
And that's, that is a very good idea.
Yeah.
He's gonna put more everybody, you know, like Ben.
No, it's not Ben's job to do that, it's Ben's job to delegate that to a supervisor and say, hey, this is your guy, I'm getting too many complaints on from Turner. You know, go out there and 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 see if Turner's right, if he's right, then deal with it, if he's, if Turner's wrong, Ben calls him back and says, hey, quick column. In a nice way. But I mean, seriously, I mean, these, these are, these are just normal. Supervisory management skills that I think Ben, you probably try to take too much in onto your own shoulders, you need to delegate stuff out and then hold those people accountable. Um. That's, it's, I I I could talk for hours on this subject because I've done it over the years, so I'll show.
You know, back like what Kurt was saying, like, okay, so much rain, we got your maintenance to do or whatever, I mean, can't we, can we use those guys to go out and and maybe? Blade, you know, I don't like Benton, Benton County, they have their guys. Check roads or whatever, they'll take their blade out and they'll drop it in the windrows and get rid of the water on the road, so it doesn't create a pothole or doesn't create, you know, stuff like that, I mean, is that something that we can? Utilize them guys to do on a day like that where they can't be fully blading or?
Yeah, I mean, we we can.
Yeah, just, yeah, get the rock out in the road and so. You know, it's like, I I used to travel a lot of Benton, I travel a lot of of Black Hawk too, and they all kind of do the same thing there. You know, Benton always has two windrows and rock. The one they pull, you know, and they also do a three pass blade instead of a two. They blade down this way, cut or. Hold it in, cut back and then spread out.
Hmm.
I know it's gonna take more time to do your road, but they got a lot better roads.
Here's the place, bro.
But we're never ever gonna touch them, no, but because they have five cores that we have.
That's why, I mean, it's.
Show you the map where.
They have on their roads. But I mean, you know, they're in the same boat over there to get to, um. The lake out by the landfill, I mean, they got hauled all the way from Garrison, just like we are.
Garrison.
What's a typical complaint that we get?
Lately or just normal?
Lately.
Like lately, like all the ones I've been getting, I just, I get complaints about the road, edge of the road that are washed, there's, um. Potholes and breaking bumps everywhere. The. The road don't have any crown anymore, so it's inverted actually, um, there's a lot of that out south.
The shoulders are higher, so.
Yep.
The chisel.
That's the biggest one I get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's causing the washouts because water doesn't have anywhere to go.
Hmm.
And it's a direct correlation, I think, but you know, there's some really guy, guys that have. It figured out and they don't get all the complaints that the others do and the ones that. Were having all the complaints on, they're setting it on float and just cutting and the the roadside is the shoulders are higher. There than the middle of the road, there's no crown and that, that causes a lot of problems with the roads, and so I think that's what we're facing, and so it all goes back to the training, the peer to peer training, the accountability without any accountability.
Unfortunately, it's probably the biggest thing there, because there's never been that.
Which all, all of those things are management issues, those aren't employee issues.
You know, like, like one thing that I've seen here just recently was I was working. On the southeast corner of, of my district and. The blade guy is blade in the dirt roads when he doesn't even have the gravel road in shape, I mean, why? Stuff like that, I mean, it just boils back down to management part like Mark said, yeah.
The kind of public's gonna have to become. The deal, because we've had really good blade men, we tried, we had them come back. The one guy that said, never, never again, because he wouldn't even do what I was telling him to do when I was in the cab with him. So if that person's unwilling to learn and do it right. I know it's union too, I mean, but they, they gotta do their jobs.
You know, I I've been in the operating heavy equipment all my life. Some people get it right away, some people have it, and some people still never get it. It's just the way it works.
That's why I'm not a motor grader operator.
If I have all the rocks in the ditch. I've met some really good people that gets to do about anything, but they couldn't cut great. Old channels, but.
Yeah.
But what I cut for grades is different than what they're doing on the road.
Hmm.
All righty, well, I think on that topic, we just need to keep exploring, what can we do better with training, I think that we can, I mean, this gives us a good starting place. Um, to kind of understand. The takeaway is hopefully that we can agree on them, people throw in what you need to, I just started taking some notes, uh, that Ben will provide an equipment replacement plan. Within thirty days, it takes us up to about nine, September seventeenth. Um. We'll put together a change of management structure on the agenda, we'll discuss it and communicate that with Ben. And how we want to proceed to fill that position if we do go that way. Understand we need to communicate better with the public on. To get out some, how the roads are closed or when they're closed and those kind of things, but, um. Communicate a little bit better about how things are going to be taken care of, I think, just in general. There was a question about the, was it the motor graders mowing their own ditches or did I?
Lot of times, yeah.
Um, we can explore that a little bit more in a. In a work session or in a, on an agenda. There's a groomer that evidently is a good tool, that's not being used, we want to look into what it takes to haul that, I guess. Try to make sure that that's getting, would, would we have an operator for it that knows how to use it or?
It'd be, you have, you know.
It'd be one person assigned.
One of the blade men.
See, it's, it's designed where it can't go too deep, yeah, you can only, you only get so much out of it.
Okay.
And it'd be like, you use it in your route, you get your done and you give it to a truck, he can use it.
Okay.
Are you able to use it without screwing it up?
Probably not.
If if it's that good, is that something that we'd want to have more? I mean, if it starts.
If it works.
I talked to, Gurney bought one and then they bought another.
Yeah.
Okay.
You said?
Gurney, I think it was, I don't know about Gurney, I know everybody.
No.
He said one up north.
Up north.
When we bought it, when he went and looked at it and Pat and I, he told me up north, they, a couple companies had gotten second one. I would imagine Gurney has a couple, they're rebuilding there, they don't have any.
I think it's one, I love it, Gurney.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
I think eighteen towns have one.
Like, we can explore that a little bit more, maybe. Have that as a takeaway, another takeaway, um, performance evaluations, that's something maybe we need to talk with Paul about, um. Having yearly performance evaluations for all employees, essentially. Uh, training, we need to develop what that looks like. Whether it's peer to peer modules, having somebody whose experience come in on a rainy day and just give a. You know, kind of a rundown of what techniques they use, doesn't mean that it's binding or anything like that, but training is training, and whatever you take away from it, maybe it makes you a better employee. Um, and I think a lot of that kind of encapsulates just addressing the, the issue. With the management structure, not particularly individuals themselves, but uh, not ruling that out to say that the management issue. Could fix a lot of this. I think that's most of what I wanted to touch on, I didn't have an agenda of any, you know, any kind, just wanted to kind of get. Get some takeaways for a starting place and would it be beneficial to kind of set up a, a two-person task force with. Um, Ben and, and, uh. Work through some of these issues here.
I think we've been doing that with other things, I think that's a good idea, two of us, I, I, I will not be one of those persons. But I'll give you, I'll give you some words. You know, if that, if we went down that route, I would say it occurs, it squared. Because they both seem to know that kind of stuff. And can, I'm sorry, but volunteer. But no, I, I, yeah. I, I think it would be, I think it would be wise to do, it would also back up Ben too, with his crew, knowing that. He's got the, the board. Supporting and looking over his shoulder in a way that, that he, you know, gives him a, gives him a little more hope when he tells him, I expect him to do this. And then we, that, that is on a path of. Performance evaluations and how they will be accountable for doing these all, so, yeah, I think two would be good.
Are you good with it? Okay. There don't have to be an official motion. Count on that.
Don't back up, oh, he's got mine, yeah, just don't back up.
I, I would volunteer myself for an alternate if one of you guys couldn't.
That's fine.
Show up, um, I'd be a backup, I think any of us could do it, but.
And just bring it to a board meeting if you want some action and discussion and give us updates.
Yeah, that'd be good, just kind of have updates every.
Even monthly or something, I mean, it's pretty important, there's a lot of stuff we talked about today.
I would say you probably want to start meeting at least every couple of weeks until you get things kind of. That work.
And you said we don't need an official move.
I don't think so, okay.
This question would be better.
Oh, let's hoping we can do some for task force stuff, work together.
Basically, you want to explain what an estimator does.
I will say, you've done a very good job, uh, the complaints that I've had and I, I send. Every one of them, I go out and look at them and I'll take pictures and I will send it to Ben and. He's been really good about getting back to me on the ones that I've had here for him lately, even with the washouts and that kind of stuff, because some of them are pretty big, you know. I'm not getting called to the ones that really aren't that big of a deal, the ones that I'm going out are legitimate, and so I'd. Commend you on that, there's one that, yeah, specifically on K, um. K Avenue. Um, they had sent him and he had to have locates and it was a horrible problem, but they did a really good job of digging the ditch out, they did a fantastic job. And you got a lot of good, good kudos for that, so. And communicating back with us, we appreciate that.
I'd echo that as well, Ben's very good at responding, replying, getting things done, like just the ditches dug out in those couple spots, the only thing. Left, otherwise everything else you get taken care of, so I echo that, you're the one in charge, you need to just delegate and. You can fix these things, you don't have to do it all, it's now that you can delegate and make some hard decisions if you need to, so.
Anything else for to go to the order, anybody?
I'm, I'm happy, I'm good.
Okay.
I bring up one thing?
Yeah.
As you reach our guy here, L. Um, I just saw Ben's contract for the first time tonight, and, uh, under one of the sections twelve, one, eight. It talks about if the board supervisors at any point wanted to separate employment, either with, with cause or without. And it seems to suggest it has to be unanimous vote, which I believe violates Iowa code. I was sitting here, I looked up a couple case law items that it suggests, um, there's like this. Clinton County versus law court about saying that if you, essentially saying that the board of steel advisors cannot. Be in an employment contract that violates Iowa statute specifically related to, um, the home rule. As I would say, and then the outcome seems to suggest that the contract is unenforceable. So it might be something, I'm not an attorney, I can certainly reach out to the county attorney and bring this to his attention, um, I, I wouldn't want. Either the board or Ben to be in a position where they're working under the idea that the contract is enforceable, but it might not be. I think that would be something about the board I want to know about, you and Ben as well, to say, hey, if that needs to be fixed or revised. It should be right away.
Yeah. Definitely.
Yep, could we give him that direction? Uh, we don't need official motion, but please do that, follow up with the county attorney. He's unable to help you after about a week, could you get back to us and we'll get it to somebody else? There's no other business coming before the board, we'll be adjourned at four thirty-one. Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, I mean, this.